So we're really looking forward to the progress on that. So that's everything for the high school for now.
I will wrap up our presentation here with the district and talking about next step for what we're planning. So before talking about next step, I'd like to talk about some of the challenges that you have probably infer from the presentations that my colleagues gave. So currently, their central system for collecting data does not exist. And just hearing about all the different assessments that we do at the different schools and all the different grade level, you can imagine the multiplier of that problem of not having a central system. You know, right now, Ms. Gail here and other curriculum coordinators are having to set up Google spreadsheet or Excel spreadsheets themselves and managing the data and then sending it out to teachers at the end of an assessment, gathering that data, receiving it back in the email inbox and cutting and pasting and making sure everything is lined up correctly. So as you can imagine, that is a very time-consuming task, not efficient. It's not efficient use of anyone's time, and that is a problem that we currently have. The other problem is no one assessment can really capture all the measures that we might be interested in looking in at the district. So an assessment might give you a growth, a really good growth measure, but it might not give you, you know, is this student mastering the standard? So how do you balance which kind of measure you want to collect data and information on? And then lastly, how much data do we collect and make sure that it's still instructionally relevant to teachers? Because really, the whole point of doing formative assessment is to inform teaching and learning in the classroom. And there's a lot of great thing happening and from what you can tell from my colleague's presentation here. But if we put the burden of collecting data and thinking of a structure for managing all that data on the teachers, they're not going to get a lot of other work done. So that are, these three questions are really what I'm thinking about when I'm trying to think about next steps that we can take as a district, is how to alleviate these issues. So one of my first step is really to work with all the discipline to streamline the data collection process in all, in all of the schools. And it really determines which measure that we want to capture at the district level, which measures are really going to help us when we look at the results to help us make policy decisions or help us to make decisions about how do we further support teachers to maximize student learning. So it's not just collecting data for data sake, because a lot of, a lot of people fall under that trap. And with data, you can really get into a rabbit hole of, you know, you want to have more data to answer more question, but then at some point, you really have to say, okay, to what end are we collecting all this data? What end is it serving? And if it's not serving the purpose of increasing student learning, then do we really need teachers to collect that? So that's some of the major questions that I'll be working with curriculum coordinators and district leaders about. Another step that we can take is to evaluate the district data system and to determine whether the current system really worked for us. So some of my colleagues refer to a district-wide training that we provided earlier today to all staff member in the district on Google, Google Apps for Education, which is a great free resource for all of our teachers and students here in the district as well. We have access to the Google Suite, the product. How do we maximize that? How do we make use of that? There's Google Classroom that's available for teachers to use to help manage communication between themselves and their students and whole assignments, tests, quizzes, announcements. So all of that is really exciting, but we need to really look at all different systems that we have going on in the district and really determine whether it meets the need of teachers in the classroom. So work with Dr. Angela Burke to train staff on relevant technology tools. So we started doing that this morning. And the feedback that I got, so I ran a session on Google Forms and Sheets, and there were about 20 teachers in my session. They came in, some of them, you know, have varying knowledge about Google and how to use Google Classroom and Google Drive. By the end of the session, I can safely say that they were all pretty excited about what Google Classroom can do and how to use Google Forms to administer surveys and tests and quizzes to their students. So I am looking forward to follow-ups from these teachers in my session, just to work with them more about how do we use these different technology in their classroom. And then, so I also want to work with curriculum coordinators to support data analysis practices in, at all grade level. So it's one thing to really collect and visualize the data and analyze it, but then what do you do with it? What do you do with that data once it's there in front of you? And that's something that I want to work with grade level teams on and get the supports from, from curriculum coordinators and school leaders to really give thoughts to that. Not only do we want to collect the data, but we want to make sure that the data is action-oriented. What, what can you do next? And then lastly, what I'm hoping to do is to develop dashboards for each school, that whole common set of data, so that whenever you want to know something about a school, you can kind of go to this dashboard. You can pull up demographic for the school. You can tell how many ELL students, how many students with, with special services, and all of that really basic data about school should be available in one place somewhere for administrators to see, for teachers to look at, for families to look at if they're, they're curious about, you know, the different schools that they have. So I'm really excited about bringing all these data resources to bear and really help push Milton Public School forward, because as, as you can tell from this presentation, there's a lot of great work that's been, that's been done already. The groundwork has been laid, and it's really, how do we think about pushing forward and maximizing and building capacity for everybody in the district? So I'm going to stop the presentation here, and we're open to take any questions that you have.
And if I might, before the school committee asks questions, in the school committee presentation, and we also have it available tonight, again, asking when these presentations should happen. Each of the levels have submitted their data, summary of their data in the testable subjects. So that was in your presentation that was sent to you. We also have it as an appendix to this presentation.
Ms. Sheridan?
I almost don't know where to begin. There's so many thoughts that I could say right now. I think that you have proven in one month that the need for this thread to be woven together, to tie all the pieces together, is so important and so critical in the work that we do in education today. And I'm just really grateful that you're here and that, that you bring so much to share. I want to just, as I was listening to all of this, and just so you know, I'm, I'm an educator, so I need to, full disclosure, I'm trying to visualize the big picture of how all these people fit together. So I see you as the data analyst and the principal, and then I see the curriculum coordinators who work with the teacher, the grade level facilitators, right? So are the, is that like you, the principals and data analysts are on either side, kind of supporting the work, but it's really the curriculum coordinators that work with the grade level facilitators? Or I'm just trying to visualize, so how is this information trickle down? Because there's so much information, and I heard that the curriculum coordinators work with, you know, grade level team facilitators who take it back and disseminate that information at a grade level. So just help me put all those pieces together, if you don't mind.
So I think it's a little bit different at every level, so I can speak to the elementary level, and then I can pass it along to my colleagues, and they can explain at the next level. At the elementary level, curriculum coordinators, principals, grade level facilitators, and classroom teachers all work together regularly through staff meetings as a way that principals can disseminate information to entire staff, which is wonderful. Our work with the grade level facilitators is something that happens monthly, where we really push out initiatives, and it was originally using a data-driven protocol to analyze math assessments. We've grown that into ELA assessments a little bit as well. And additionally, we do occasionally, and more than occasionally, are invited to grade level meetings with classroom teachers as well. So, and that could be the principal and/or the curriculum coordinator. So there are sort of multiple levels at which all three people work together. At this point, having V on board, it's been really nice, because the curriculum coordinators and the principals can really feed the information that we've gathered thus far to V, who can help us to sort of determine what we want to, what we want to see from the data moving forward. So it's sort of happening at, in multiple ways at the elementary level.
If I might, before you leave the elementary, the elementary teachers in Milton would tell you that they work daily with the coordinators. So these grade level facilitators are just another assistance to back up the coordinators. They meet once a month. As Ms. Gail said, they bring back initiatives, but it's not the grade level facilitator's responsibility at all. They're another backup communicator, working with the appears. But the coordinators in Milton are hands-on in the classrooms, doing observations, working with small groups of teachers, working collaboratively with the principals. So the coordinators in Milton take on a huge role.
So at the middle school level, we have a, I would say, critical and powerful structure that supports the data work, and that is in our common planning time that's built right into the schedule. And so every other week, we have department meetings, curriculum meetings, that are focused on data and reflecting on data and making curriculum decisions and looking at student work and those kinds of things. So those meetings are facilitated by curriculum coordinators, and then I meet on a regular basis with the curriculum coordinators to do all of those same things as well. And then all of us working together with V.
At the high school, I feel like it's most similar to how it runs at the middle school. We have weekly common planning time, we have common planning time, and they meet weekly, I should say, for all the different departments, and they meet with the department heads who are curriculum people. And then I meet with the department heads to talk about progress and, and goals, and how we're working towards them, and how the student performance, and then we meet with Mr. Jett regarding everything that's going on for the full school.
I, I would also add that, you know, at each individual school level, they're really focused on the data that impacts their, their particular school environment. And as the district analyst, I have a much wider view, so I can really see how, you know, data is flowing from elementary school to middle school to high school. And I'm really, I see myself as a person who kind of pull all of that together and kind of see the pattern and the trend and the thread really that goes through all these different schools as we, you know, serve the whole K to 12 spectrum.
So I just need to say, I feel like it almost takes my breath away with the, how far we've come in terms of looking at the curriculum, at the assessment of the curriculum, aligning it to the common core, and the internal assessments that have been developed and now translating it to PARC. And with the addition of this position and your invaluable resource, I just couldn't be prouder of, of the work that you all do on a daily basis. And you support our teachers, which is so important, because that job is very challenging. And, you know, just as the job of students today is very challenging, we expect a lot of everyone. And so it's, it's great when these supports can be put in place. Thank you so much. And I do have a question about PARC, but I'll save it till later. Thank you.
So thank you for that presentation. I have a question really for each level, and that relates to the amount of testing. And just as best you can describe, how much of our students' time is spent on testing now? Is it the right amount? And if it is, why?
That's an excellent question, and it's something that we talk about regularly. And to credit Ms. Vu in her presentation, I think, to what end? You know, that everything that we push out to classrooms, we want to ensure that there is a benefit to the students sitting in those classrooms. We have a variety of assessment periods throughout the year. Literacy assessment happens from two to four times a year. Children are usually only tested for about 20 minutes with the Fountas and Penel, so it's a very short one-on-one test where they're actually reading. So you're really actually not losing instructional time with the student during that. And curriculum coordinators, reading specialists, and classroom teachers work together to administer those. So it really facilitates wonderful conversation around how to move instruction forward, which is great. SRI takes approximately 60 minutes, and again, that's administered twice a year. The common unit assessments at the end of every math unit, those again are typically 45 minutes to 60 minutes, sometimes less. And those are done as a summative component at the end of each unit, but they are also formative in that they let us know how children are doing with the concepts that were presented in each unit. So they really are a critical component of what we do in terms of assessing math instruction moving forward. And there are about 11 of those, in addition to the pre-test, the mid-year, and the post-test in mathematics. The end-of-unit assessments are relatively informal. It's not something, while we do have common procedures across the district for administering them, they are not something that we hype children up about and do 10 days of review for. It's just something that happens in the course of normal instruction. So we are certainly cognizant of the, the idea that over-testing children is not what is best for children, and it is something that we always keep in mind, that everything that we put in front of children is something that is useful for them and for their teachers.
I could just echo all of what Mrs. Gail just said, but I'll also add, just want to differentiate the term "testing" and "assessment," so that we see assessment in a, in a broader way than maybe what testing might bring to mind from our own experiences. And I point that out because well-designed assessments are instructional in and of themselves. And so, so what we aspire to is certainly balancing, there's some testing that we have to do where students are in rows and they're quiet, and they put their books under, you know, under their seats and, and all of that. And certainly try to balance the amount of that that we do. So we do have eight to 10 common assessments. For example, in math, each end-of-unit has a common assessment. So we try to balance that with actually doing instruction, I would say. But we're also aspiring to create assessments, tools that we can collect evidence of understanding that are also, again, instructional in nature. And so the document-based questions, for example, the claims, evidence, and reasoning tasks that students will have. So, so by doing the assessment, they're building their critical thinking skills, and they're developing their science understanding just by engaging in the assessment itself. And so, so we are having some really good, messy conversations about that as well.
So you'd say that this is different in kind from MCAS testing or PARC testing?
Absolutely.
Or mid-year testing or final testing?
Absolutely, absolutely. And even just in my, now sixth year, six years in Milton, I've seen at the middle school a marked difference, even in midterm. So when I was first at the Pierce, there were several days, three or four days of practicing for the midterm, and, and that has since gone away. And so that, instead, really thinking about, what do we really want to know from students? What do we really want to understand about what they understand? And how can we best get that? And is practicing for the midterm for three or four days the best sort of use of time? And, and that has really, has shifted dramatically in just the, the six years that I've been here.
And I agree very much with what Amy Gail and Karen Swalding have said. And I just wanted to point out, too, that when you look at the assessments that we are, that we spoke about tonight, I know in the high school, we do have our regular tests, we have our mid-year and final, but a lot of the other assessments we're doing, the essay writing and the collaborative thinking tasks and the portfolio ideas, those are all not the standardized testing, like you were saying, sitting in rows with the books on your desk. So we're trying to include other types of assessments to really round out the experience. I will say that there have been conversations at the high school regarding assessments, particularly with, you know, whether we're going, the state is going to go with PARC or MCAS, how it's going to go, you know? And also with snow days, we were talking about, you know, perhaps we're, we have a mid-year and a final, do we want to change one of those assessments somehow? Maybe to do an alternative type assessment? And this is just conversation we've had, we haven't gone anywhere, but just talk about this. You know, maybe we want to do an alternative type assessment straight across the board for the mid-year. Maybe we want to do that for the final, do something with like a portfolio perhaps. Some schools have gotten rid of mid-years. That's out there, too. So we've had that discussion, because I know with the PARC, there's the PBA, the performance base part, and then the end of year. So that's two times you're testing in the year. So I, I know this year has been a hard year, because we're piloting the, the PARC, and we also have the MCAS. But we've been, when we chose the course of the classes that we've, are tested, that are testing, there are different groups of students. So we're, we're very aware that there is a lot of testing going on, and we've had conversations about it. But with these assessments that we're talking about tonight, we're trying to include different types for the students, so it's not just pencil, paper, sit down, take a test, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Just to follow up on that, and again, you did an incredible job with your data in such a short time, too. It's pretty amazing. But just to follow up on that, Michelle, I do see in the student newspaper, if you read it yet, students' feelings about PARC. Just thought I would share that.
They felt great about it, didn't they? They felt great about it, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
Shall I, anyway. And there's another article, seven things every kid should master, and it talks about the pressure on standardized testing. So I'm just putting it out there to follow up with the question about how much testing there is there. Does seem, and it's not anybody's fault, and we have to do it, and it's great that you guys are so organized, but wow, it's a lot for kids. So just putting that out there. The article spurred me on.
Ms. Kelly?
First of all, thank you very much. It is amazing to see, as Lyndale Lee referred to, how far the system has come with regard to all of this. And as John Phelan used to say, you know, all of these are just check-ins, I hope, to help guide the teacher, to help you succeed in whatever it is that you're talking about. And the more creative that we can be, as I think you just described, in terms of what those look like, not that they, you know, necessarily have a certain 80%, 90%, et cetera, but they're just helping the teacher to help the student. So all these assessments you refer to, which again is amazing compared to where we were several years ago, do they impact children's grades? Or is this just truly used to guide the teacher to help you throughout?
Well, I'll start with the elementary level. The Fountas and Penel and Scholastic Reading Inventory are not something that we use to impact grades. Those are strictly assessments that we use to understand where children are and to help inform our practice around reading. So they are certainly not something that are graded. They do generate a score or a level, but again, that's used to help guide children to finding appropriate books. And again, with the Fountas and Penel helping us to determine what those particular teaching points are that each individual child may need. The math unit tests for the upper grades, you know, first and second graders, we're not looking at them in terms of calculating a numerical grade, so it's, I can't say that they certainly do that, but because they are based in standards, they are impacting in terms of how far along a child has come in terms of their understanding of grade level standards. But again, it's an informative tool, more than it is a tool for grading at the, at the lower grades. In the older grades, they begin to calculate those into more of a numerical average. You know, the secondary programs, I think, can speak to grades a little bit differently than we can, because most of our students are quite, quite young, and we're not calculating averages for seven-year-olds.
So in a similar way, the, our SRI data or our Fountas and Penel data would not feed into a grade. However, our common unit assessments do get calculated into the grade. At this point, the MARS performance-based tasks do not. We've had a lot of conversation, by the, I should have prefaced by saying, we've had a lot of conversation about which assessments should count towards a grade, and, and there's an argument on either side. Certainly, our pre-tests do not, because those are solely, you know, to inform us about sort of where students are when they come in. And so it really depends on the, the assessment at this point. We, we imagine that the DBQs eventually will, at least the, the final ones will feed into a grade, potentially the claims, evidence, and reasoning. But again, it really depends on the assessment and what we're learning from it.
I will say that most of the high school assessments are counted in some way towards a student's grade, whether it's in, it might not be just a numerical grade, it could be counted in a, like, you might not get an 80 for it, but it could, might count in terms of like a participation or, like, in that sense. But I will say that most of the assessments at the high school level are counted in some way towards a student's grade.
And I guess the reason I ask it is, is this something that you tell the students that we're going to do this tomorrow, or we're having this test? To, I think, the other comments is, is this putting additional stress because we're, you know, when I went to school, you had a test, I don't know, every other, whatever? So are we doing this much more often now, and therefore there's a sort of anxiety that comes along with it? Or how is this impacting sort of the student's life, I guess is what I'm asking?
I think the teachers, I know at the, at the high school, they, they try to make it as part of practice. For, for example, like with the collaborative thinking tasks in the math, it's almost like any other type of problem, like, we're going to work on a problem on this day. So it's not this big, and this is the problem for the term. You know, it's not that type of presentation. So they make it part of their daily practice in that sort of sense. Same thing with the, the units in the, for the essay writing, for history and for English. It's just part of their daily practice, so it's not like this huge looming assessment that's coming.
That's great.
I'll just add to that, at the middle school level, especially sixth grade, it does take a little convincing that the pre-test doesn't count, because they are nervous and they don't believe us. So, so we, we are definitely still working on shifting that, that culture a little bit, because they want to do well, and they want to perform well, and, and so it's, it's uncomfortable. And so, so we've been working on that a little bit and really trying to balance our need for wanting to know what they come in to the building knowing already with, with their level of anxiety and wanting to do well and, and all of that.
If, could I answer to Mary Kelly's point, one other issue, that from the district level, all of these assessments, when we were, when the middle school was implementing the curriculum changes in the sixth grade, completely based on the data. The conversation began based on the student data. When the assistant superintendent and I travel to each elementary school, and we look at where we're going to deploy after each quarter, our reading specialists and support staff, completely based on the student data. So now that we have V here, we're going to be able to look district-wide and be able to see what we do now is to the point about the spreadsheets, we go district to district. Well, we know that this school, after the second quarter, we have to redeploy all of our reading specialists based on the student data. Now we're going to be able to still sit down with the principals, but make those decisions district-wide. It's, so it's not one principal speaking up as years ago, I need more support. This is based on the student data and looking across the district. So you're talking about a pre-test, a post-test, a district, and then we're looking from the umbrella of the entire district and how to deploy our resources. So it's really driving, driving instruction, but it's driving student achievement. And I'll turn it back to you. The elephant on the table, before we leave this, to talk about PARC. We would be remiss if we didn't have these individuals on the line and the students over there that are eyeing me, speak to the PARC. But I want to frame this by saying I spoke with Chairman Walker, that last year, we were in the pilot. So this year, grades three through eight, except for science, are taking the PARC exam. The high school, Michelle Cruzer alluded to, the 10th grade is still taking MCAS, and it grades five, eight, and 10. We, well, it's nine for the science, we're still taking the MCAS. But last year, we did the pilot, and we, I got an email from a area superintendent who said that it was a catastrophe in their district. I think I shared it with the school committee. So I quickly wrote to all of our administrators and said, could you give me your feedback? I'm hearing from you, but formalize your feedback. Because of the practice last year, the work under the leadership of the assistant superintendent Sheehan, last year's assistant superintendent Phelan, and these principals and coordinators, they have anticipated every aspect of this PARC testing. And you should know as a school committee, that when the testing started, the- And you should know as a school committee that when the testing started, the whole district went just to watch that first testing, to watch how it was implemented, to anticipate any problems. Our technology people have traveled from school to school. So I am very proud to tell you, and these administrators can speak for themselves. Again, a lot of reinsurance from administrators to teachers, reassuring teachers, so they're reassuring students, and it's been almost, am I exaggerating? A flawless implementation. Without the support of the school system, the capital, and the MFE, we were, we were ready with the equipment. We were ready with the computers, with the Chromebooks, and it speaks to the confidence. And I said, my goal is to have Milton Public Schools compete, students compete in any arena, and this is going to give them the confidence to be able to compete on any test they're given or any assessment. So before we leave and turn, I turn it back to Ms. Kelly because I interrupted her, sorry, Chairman Walker. Do you want to speak to that elephant on the table about PAC?
Sure. So as Superintendent Gormly mentioned, doing the field test last year was absolutely invaluable in terms of, you know, road testing it prior to this year. At the elementary level, you can imagine they were all somewhat nervous and excited about taking a computer on the, taking a test on the computer. But what they found after the first day was that it wasn't as hard as they thought. All of the things that they had been doing during the course of the year had prepared them for it. You know, close reading during Reader's Workshop, thinking critically about mathematical concepts, all of those kinds of things prepared them to take this test. There's no such thing as traditional test prep anymore. Good teaching is test prep now. And I think the teachers, and myself especially, have appreciated the fact that most children aren't testing for any more than 90 minutes a day. So it's something that a fifth grader can test from 9:00 to 10:30 in the morning and then still have math that afternoon and still go to gym and still have music and all of those things. Whereas with MCAS, especially in grades four and seven, children could be testing all day long. That really takes quite a bit out of a small person. So I think that while we see more test sessions than we did with MCAS, they're much shorter, so it's not impacting the school day in as profound of a way. So I think the children were, handled it beautifully. I think the teachers handled it beautifully. I think front, the technology department was supportive, and it couldn't have gone any better than it did. We had small technology glitches along the way, but there was nothing we couldn't fix. And I'm just so thankful we had the opportunity to do it this year. I was in front of you all last year when you voted on whether or not we would take PAC. And I think it was a real gift to be able to experience this test this year because we were well-prepared, very well-prepared.
I will echo absolutely everything, again, that Mrs. Amy Gale said. We had, so we're still in the throes. We're just finishing up English Language Arts. We'll be moving on to math shortly. And the, the feedback from, from students has, has been quite similar, that they feel good about it, like they've accomplished something. I think the teachers maybe lost as much sleep as the students did because they were worried about doing it right and breaking PAC, and we kept saying, you can't break it, just refresh and log back in. And that solved 95% probably of anything that, any bumps along the road. We've been reflective about the process, too, and so we made an intentional choice to spread it out and only do one assessment. That has spread it out over a number of days because we have all three grade levels testing. So we've been reflecting on that and whether or not we should double up and shorten the number of days that it stretches over. So we're thinking about that, getting feedback from students so that we can make some good choices about that. But it absolutely has been just far, far fewer bumps than any of us imagined, and it, and it has everything to do with the rehearsal we went through last year, but I would say even more so, what an incredible team. I can speak personally, obviously, about the Pierce Middle School, but I know it's true for the other levels, just the incredible, incredible people who work in this district. It's been pretty much flawless, for sure.
At the high school, we completed the grade 11 ELA. We have our math next week, and it went very smoothly at the high school. And although I know Amy said that her students were nervous and excited, I think some of the high school kids were, sorry, students were nervous and maybe not as excited. That's a feature of a high school student. So they were, but they were, I was surprised, we had great attendance, not surprised, I was very pleased, I should say, and I, I expected of our high school students because our high school students are wonderful. They came in, they were on time, we had very few absences, they worked really hard. And the nice thing about it, when I asked the students afterwards, they said, hey, it wasn't that bad. You know, they liked that it was shorter, that was a, a big plus for them. And I thought that they worked really hard on it and they did a very nice job, it went very smoothly. So I know it's another test, but I think it was very important for us to participate in it, and I think it's, it was a really good experience. And they said that it really wasn't that bad, it wasn't too different from the MCAS. The setup of the questions were a little bit, it was a little bit different, but not very far off.
Bagley-Jones?
Before, if any of the students wanted to speak, I just wanted to say something really quick. I think Superintendent Gormly is, I mean, no pressure or anything. I think Superintendent Gormly's point about the resources, like when you look at the results and you realize you might need to plug in another resource here because of the test results, I think that that is really valuable. The things I worry about for kids who have test anxiety, I worry about that. I also know that some kids like to test, test very well, and others don't. Kids right on the verge, maybe don't need special ed, but maybe have some dyslexia or some other things, absolutely hate and dread the testing. And I know at the high school, and I know we, we need them and it's good and there's positive parts about it, I know at the high school, one of the adjustment counselors, Jenny, Bellevue, I'm forgetting her name, she was a student mine, but she has a whole relaxation room now, which I think is a fabulous thing at the high school. Have you been in there yet? You should go relax there.
And I have, I've seen a lot of the students go around with their
Fidget toys.
Different toys.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that's where my worry comes from, is I just think it's an awful lot of pressures, pressure, you know, juniors who are looking at colleges, you know, there's just, there's a lot out there. But I do think Superintendent Gormly's point about it helps you all decide where resources should go, I think that that is really valid. So, thank you.
So I think that this was students?
Could I just say one quick thing? So just to speak on, just like all the things we've talked about, with, with regards to PAC, I think PAC is definitely like important. It definitely gets rid of the stigma of MCAS week. I know like throughout middle school, elementary school, middle school, and my first couple of years of high school is like, oh, this is MCAS week, I got to go to bed at 8:00 in the morning, get up, eat my big bowl of Wheaties, and then like all that stuff. So I think that definitely helps. I don't think it's necessary to have a four-hour test when PAC has really worked it down to 90 minutes. I think that's very important. One big problem that I have with PAC and that I had taking it last year is, I have done math my whole life on a pen, with a pen and piece of paper, where when I had to put that onto a computer and had to show work on a computer, it was very confusing. And I, we did get prepared, but I think that's something that we really, really, like with math teachers, and I, with the test prep thing, I could not agree more, test prep should not be there, it should be good teaching. But with that, I think definitely a little bit of test prep is needed just because we've, most of us have gone our whole lives doing all of our math out on the piece of paper, showing our work. My old math teacher. But um, yeah, I think that's very important, the whole PAC definitely shortens it down. But one thing that does concern me a little bit is, and I know I talked about this last year a lot, is that we haven't seen our results yet. We, I believe we still have not seen our results from, from last year's math and then this year's ELA. I think that's something very important, like obviously, I know there's a formula that goes from MCAS to PAC that's been kind of worked out, but I think it's very important that we see how we do on PAC, how it works up with MCAS, and all those different things. And when the whole stress and relaxation and all those different factors, I think it's a, going to happen junior year and senior year of high school is a very stressful time. But I wouldn't out speak for myself and I think a good amount of students, I wouldn't say PAC and MCAS is the main stressor. It's different, the SATs, different stuff like that, I would say is the real stress. So I wouldn't put any stress on the PAC exam. I think it's just another thing that we do need to do in the district.
You good? Did you have something else?
Just in terms of all of the data, and thank God you're taking on this task, what are other districts, do they have a tool or tools that they use for this that perhaps we need to purchase, or how do other districts do it, I guess?
I just came from Boston, so I can speak to this a little bit. Other districts struggle with the same problems of, you know, how much assessment do you do, what kind of tools do you use to help teachers collect the data that they need to do? So I would say that everyone is honestly struggling with the same issue, where we have so much sources of data to draw from, the real question is how to really determine what is the most critical source to use, and then focusing on that and really developing the capacity of teachers to look at data, to interpret data. Because if teachers can do all that, then they know how to adjust the instruction and what to do in the classroom, and that is the real key to, to increasing student achievement, really. It's not, it's not in looking at, you know, all the different sources of data that are possible out there. It's really, maybe you have a couple of sources, what are you going to do with that to leverage what you need to do in the classroom?
Great, thank you.
Sheridan?
So Ellis, my PAC question now, sorry. I, just to clarify, so you mentioned that there's a test that the students are taking now, and then there's an end of the year, PAC assessment. So I think it would be helpful if you could just very briefly clarify what the difference is and how is that information presented? Because as everyone's waiting and wondering what it's going to look like, how we're, you know, they're going to tie from MCAS to PAC and show the student growth. But is, will it be presented separately, so you'll get one set of data for this PBA that we're doing now and another for the end of the year? Or, you know, are they going to tie it together and will it be a big picture question? I might not be able to answer that briefly, or you just don't know? I, I haven't heard the answer to that question, so.
So, so just to clarify, I was actually presenting this very thing to PTO right before I came here, just to clarify the difference a little bit between the performance-based assessment, the PBA, which is what we're all in the throes of right now, and the end-of-year assessment. The performance-based assessment tends to have more layers to the questions, tends to have more writing and explanation involved, still within the circle of what they call those skills and knowledge base for college and career, so really using evidence to support claims, things like that. End-of-year is primarily multiple choice, still, still higher level questioning, but a shorter time span, so maximum 60 minutes as opposed to 90 minutes, which is some of the performance-based ones. We don't know yet what that reported data will look like. We have been told that folks far smarter than I, and far smarter than others, have figured out how to translate the results of the MCAS, excuse me, of PAC into MCAS so we can still have those growth percentiles. But even in terms of what a parent report might look like, will it identify standards that a student is generally stronger in compared to others? We don't have a lot of that information at this point. We don't know exactly what it will look like.
But to the point Ms. Sheridan asked at the last meeting, we were contacted by Desi and we, by Marilyn Decker, who is heading up the PAC scholars across the state, and we have our own Courtney Walsh Miller as a PAC scholar. So Ms. Sheridan, you asked, and Mr. Walker rightfully told me not to answer the question at the last meeting until we checked, the results from PAC will not be out until September or October because of this calibration that they're going to work on over the summer. One would think to Ms. Kelly's point, that you take a online test, you would get the results quickly, that's their intention before the school year ends in the coming years. But right now, the, our PAC scholar indicated to us, and I shared with the school committee, that it will be September and October when these results are coming out.
So I think that this has been an important education for the school committee. I certainly have a much more detailed understanding of where we are, what we're doing, and why we're doing it. And I think there's, there's still an important part of the discussion to be had, which is regarding the information in the appendix. So I'm going to have you back for return engagement because I, I really think it's important for us to hear and for parents to hear, what, what have we learned thus far about teaching and learning as a result of this, this work that we've been doing? And with regard to the data in the appendix, what, what does that tell us about student growth and student performance by, by, across the district, by school, by grade level? So I, I think that we could benefit from that discussion as well, and arguably, that's, as, as you said in your presentation, that's really what this is about. It, it should be directed at informing teaching and learning and ultimately affecting student growth and student performance. So you did such a good job, I'm going to have you back.
And so, Mr. Walker, to that point, when we asked for this presentation, the team said they finished, they felt like this was a book half-read because Dr. Spalding had come last June and presented on behalf of the district. And so the team had said, you have this appendix, you have almost the story without the end of the story at the end of the year. So working around your schedules after school gets out, you know, in late June, if we finish the two-year cycle, if that would be agreeable.
Let's talk about that. I'm, I'm not sure that, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I have one happening that we should do now, that's probably not on your list, but I was planning to do this last meeting before we lost the students. Mr. McCarthy has what I think is a very exciting announcement about his future.
Oh, you want me to do this here?
I do.
I've recently committed to play rugby at St. Bonaventure University this coming year.
Wait, that's not, that's not the best part.
What else?
Didn't you get a scholarship?
I did, yes. I did, I did receive a merit-based and academic, athletic scholarship for that, so it's very exciting. I, we will be playing in the Division 1A Conference of the, I think it's the East, it's the Northeast Conference, and I'll be playing with the East teams. So we'll be playing different schools like Army, Cootson, Buffalo University. So it's a different, a bunch, it's definitely a big step in the right direction, in fact, of my academic career and my rugby career, so I'm very excited.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Good for you.
Do you want to play with the two of them?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I have that. Wait, are we in Happening室?
Since I'm, since I'm
Two.
Listen, you're in charge, take, take, no, take over right now.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be very brief. First of all, so I'd just like to speak about the rugby team a little bit. We played Newport this past Sunday in a very muddy game down at the Fort Adams in Newport. We won 35 to 10. So that was a very good start to the season. We were able to get all the players in and it looks like we're going to have a great year. We have over 55 players this year. It's the largest the team has ever been with, I think, over 20 freshmen. So it really shows the team's going in the right direction. And as captain this year, I'm very happy to see where I'm leading the team. And then to go to the tulip day, this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at Cunningham, Cunningham Park, so Cunningham Hall in that parking lot, we will be having a yard sale. So we'll be selling different items, household items that we've brought, come together from the team, all very good condition items. And also, we will be selling tulips for East, for those last-minute Easter presents, so anyone that needs a tulip, we ordered a lot of them. This fundraiser is virtually going towards, anybody that's been involved in rugby in the past knows that after every rugby game, it's tradition, for the higher levels, it's tradition to go to the sponsor pub. We don't do that in high school. So we, we have team dinners, so what we'll do is, especially like when a school comes from sometimes over an hour away to two hours away, what we'll do is we get either pizza, peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, and that's all either through parent contributions or any money we have in our team account. So I think it's very important. First, I'd like to give a shout-out to Erica Donahue, who does the most amazing job with the rugby team. She's been the rugby team She's been the rugby team mom for, I think it's three to, three or four years now, and she's just done an amazing, amazing job, and she's contributed a lot of time and effort towards this. So I think this team fundraiser, we'll be able to get a lot of that burden of trying to find parent contributions, and by raising money, we'll be able to buy that ourselves. So I think that's very important. Then my second announcement, a different fundraiser. So the student leaders here at Milton High School is, we are a club group type thing, and we work to kind of bring in the freshmen every year. I was actually partnered up with Ally Jones last year. And what we do is we bring the freshmen to the high school, we meet them at orientation, we meet our group, and then throughout the year, we go into their homerooms every now and then to talk. We do health and wellness things, we do stuff on mid-terms, kind of midterm prep, a lot of middle schoolers, a lot of freshmen are coming from middle school, and it's a very big change. So one thing we decided to do at the beginning of this year is Milton High School's such a charitable, community-based town, so what we wanted to do is we wanted to get behind a cause. So what we decided to do, actually in this very room in the summer while we were planning, was we decided to get behind veteran benefits. So what we decided to do is we've teamed up with the New England Center for Homeless Veterans, and they have what's called a welcome home, a welcome home package that they give to veterans that move from the shelter into their own homes for the first time. So what we, what we did as student leaders is we created two welcome home baskets. So virtually what we did is you create, you get different items such as like bathroom supplies, cutlery, cups, just anything that you would need, everything that I think we take advantage of. We don't really, we don't understand where the toothpaste sometime, at least I don't. Where the toothpaste just, it's in the bathroom already. And I think we don't really understand what that actually costs and what it takes. So by creating these home baskets, we really got a feel for what it actually does. So what we're now doing is we're doing a school, school-wide fundraiser where we're asking people to donate items such as cutlery, hampers, just different type of kitchen supplies, virtually anything you could think of that goes into buy, to a new home, we would love. So what we're doing is we're collecting those supplies up until April tenth, and the drop-off will be in either Mr. Shaw or Mr., actually Dr. Fitzgerald's room before or after school. So we'd love if we could get some items. We're trying to create a bunch of, we're trying to get a lot of items, so then we can distribute them in a couple different home baskets.
And if anybody's watching and they don't know where those classrooms are, they can donate items and drop them off at the front office.
Yes, definitely. Anything that is dropped off at the front office, one of the student leaders or a teacher will be able to bring down to their room. So virtually anywhere you would like to drop them off, you can send them, send them in with students, especially freshmen. We're trying to get the freshmen behind this. We're actually working with our homerooms. With my homeroom, I created a list. Everybody kind of has their own assigned item that they volunteer, and the great thing about it was they volunteered for the item. I read off a list, and I saw hands shooting up left and right, saying, oh, I wanna bring this, like, oh, I have this at home, I can bring this. And so it's really good to see like the enthusiasm behind this event, and I think that's one of the most important things, at least for me at Milton High School, was doing these community-based fundraisers. So any items, drop off at the main office or Mr. Shaw, Dr. Fitzgerald room. Thank you.
The edited FY fifteen, sixteen school year calendar. I, I think maybe the next meeting we'll stop talking about snow, but driven by the weather this year, and you don't have to, you pick up a newspaper anytime, and you're reading about the situations in school districts that had to cancel so many days of school that it's forcing their school calendar to go on Saturdays, April vacation. So listening to the feedback from parents who contacted me about this issue for next year, I put in my email blast the question on a survey, would you prefer that school be in session on Yom Kippur next year, September twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, and Good Friday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, so that school would end earlier? And so I put the school calendar in, what, the results of the survey are that seventy-one point eight percent of the parents and staff replied yes. They would rather go to school on those two days and get out of school earlier in June. I call it two days in the bank earlier. And to the no, twenty-eight point one percent. I had my monthly PTO meeting this week, and I've gained the feedback from the PTO presidents who are one hundred percent support of the changing, revising the school calendar. And I want to say to the public that I am as sensitive as anyone else to the religious holidays, and I've worked my entire career as an administrator over the Jewish holidays to direct our teachers not to have any long-term assignments or tests on those days. So I would commit with changing this calendar to direct our teachers from my office, from me directly, through our principals, that on these days, no test would be given, no long-term assignments would be due on those days, so that families whose children and students choose to take those days off, they could without having to miss assignments. And just as we do now, over the, some of the holidays over the years, teachers can use their personal time if in fact they feel on either of these holidays, religious holidays, that they want to use their personal time to take the day off. So I have put to observe their religious practices. So I've put in front of you a revised calendar that includes going to school on Yom Kippur and going to school on Good Friday, and the end of school pending no snow next year would be June sixteenth. I would say to you that we would look at this at the next year and have their, have analyze and survey how the results were, but I want to tell you, this might be an excellent year next year to put this in place because Labor Day is so late that we don't go back to school until September, and we go to school before Labor Day. And so my recommendation is a revised school calendar for next year with going to school on these two religious holidays, and the last day of school now will be June sixteenth.
Ms. Padere?
Superintendent Gormley, did we reach out to any of our, I know we taught, we kind of keep in contact with our religious leaders to see how their, what their feedback was on this? My only concern is, and you know, we did put that out to everyone, but it seems like about five hundred people responded, which is what, about fifteen percent of the school population? And thirty percent of those said no. So I have two questions for you. Did we reach out to them just to see how they feel, to be sensitive about this? And also, what, do we have any other Jewish holidays off on the calendar as well?
Well, two things. One, Rabbi Benjamin from our temple in Milton came to me years ago, and we didn't have the Jewish holidays off in Milton. And so what he asked on behalf of the members of the temple was that we would have Yom Kippur off, and if Yom Kippur was on a weekend, we would have the second day of Rosh Hashanah. And so I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I told Chairman Walker, I went to school with students and children and peers of the Jewish faith, so I understand that the second day of Rosh Hashanah, many parents used to say to me, why the second day and not the first? And it was the rabbi who came and said, again, if Yom Kippur is on a school day, would you have Yom Kippur off? If Yom Kippur is on a weekend, would you have the second day of Rosh Hashanah connected to a weekend? And so the rabbi, did I not forward you his email?
You might have, you did.
Did I? I forwarded the rabbi, I reached out to the rabbi because he had approached me, and he communicates with me often. And I'm invited to his home for the Seder either night this weekend, which is very moving for me. And so he reached out and he wrote to the members of his congregation that he appreciated its democracy. He was very eloquent in saying that Christmas is a commercial holiday. He still would like for us to have Yom Kippur off. And so he contacted me and gave me that reply. Again, I, I respond to, there are parents who were called, and they were very, very concerned about having to take so many days off this year for snow. That was beyond my control, and it was the weather and safety issues. There were also, June is an issue. You know, you're talking about Park, and when you take Park and the heat of June, I, you know, the instruction takes place really in these formative months that we were just talking about. And so after what we went through with this year, starting school so late next year, I think that going to school on these two days and then analyzing what happens next year would be my recommendation. And I realize what you're saying, but these, it also tells me, these are the people, I take the liberty of thinking everyone reads my email blast, and so these are the people who have a feeling about the issue. Maybe the other people are saying it's up to the school administration and the school committee to make the determination. And I want to tell you, my PTO presidents, which you were one, they, they get the feedback from their schools. And I've never, never gotten feedback from the PTO presidents. We have a code among us, and I run lots of ideas by them, and to a PTO president, they were in support.
Sheridan?
My question is about the calendar. Isn't, aren't these dates negotiated with the union in terms of days off? Is that part of their contract?
No.
So, okay.
What's negotiated, I did get a passionate email from a parent who wants to go to school, wants us to go to school the day before Thanksgiving. That's in the contract. Also in the contract is you have to be done by the last day of June, but these are not decisions. And again, the email blast went to all the teachers and parents, and I did communicate with the head of the MEA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who only had one vote. Whether she voted or not, I don't know.
Mr. Zulis?
So I have a couple of questions. Do we know what the universe of respondents was? I mean, there's about four thousand students, but there's, you know, number of parents.
Yes.
So do we know what the, I mean, we see five hundred responded, so the universe is maybe two thousand, twenty-five hundred? I mean, I'm, I'm guessing.
I'm not going to say that number because I don't know the exact number.
This just goes to the percentage, yeah, total number of families, yeah. Because, you know, as Becky suggested, the, the, the responses, you know, depending on the number of respondents, could be anywhere from twelve to twenty-five percent. And if, if it had gone the other way, would the recommendation have gone the other way?
Absolutely.
This is purely driven on this survey?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
No, well, I say it's absolutely. Again, I've had a, let, let me just say to you that I shared with Chairman Walker, and you received feedback. There was lots of feedback about the days off this year. A lot of families had to take the days off, and there was a lot of feedback about the school calendar. Again, some people want to take a week in March and eliminate February and April. Well, we test every day in March for Park. The superintendents you saw in the Globe, I've given you in your green folder a copy of the article, the superintendents were all surveyed, and the superintendent said, you have to explain to the public that with Park testing until the commissioner changes that, we can't do that. And so a lot of districts are looking at ways to be creative, and, you know, they're looking at February vacation, they're looking at April, and there are a few days, like the day before Thanksgiving and these holidays. A lot of districts who had to take more days off than we did are now going to school on Good Friday. So I, I have to tell you, we discussed it at the leadership team, and I said, if you survey the parents and teachers, it's the kind of community that you get feedback.
And, and, and so because of the, the Park testing, there's no option with the February, February, April?
Right.
Could do it later in February or earlier in April? There's no way to do it that way?
Not right now.
Okay.
But, but again, I, I'll share with you the actual, the Globe wrote up the survey that we were all given, and one superintendent said, you know, you have to explain to the public this. It's an issue.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Sorry. The, and I think that's a good point, Mike, but I do think that this was a creative idea on your part, Mary, that parents really pushed us on the schedule and asking why we couldn't think outside the box, and this is thinking outside the box. And it's good that folks won't get, their kids won't get penalized if they do take these off as religious holidays, and there won't be higher, you know, the test scores and all that. And I do think the reasoning, and I, I want to be clear about this, so I'm not saying the holidays aren't important, but I do think that going to school in June, late in June, is not educationally sound, as Superintendent Gormly said. And we've also gotten pushback over the years about starting before Labor Day, but we saw the importance of that this year. And kids are all so fresh from being off for the summer, and those two things, not, little is time as possible in June, and early as possible in August, I just think is better educationally. My last point is, I don't think it's a good message to give that this is driven only by the parents. That's what I'm trying to say, is that there's good educational reasoning behind it by Ms. Gormly, and it's not like if another parent group came out next week with another survey, we would flip-flop back. I don't want people to get that message.
Well, I surveyed, to your point in Mr. Zulis's question, I surveyed, in another district, there was no survey of parents when this was done.
Right.
And, and staff. So I said, if we survey the parents and staff, we don't over-survey, so when we ask a question, we, we get honest feedback.
Ms. Sheridan?
No, that was me.
Oh, Ms. Padere?
And Mrs. Pierre. I don't want to get-
How are you?
Great.
Good.
I don't want to get into a discussion of every day, but I'm just curious. September fourth, you have off too. Is that?
This was when the prior superintendent, Dr. Jafun, as I gave credit to her before her time, implemented before Labor Day, this was in response to Milton Public School families. And so what happens, the teachers come back, and then the children come, the students come for two days, and that gives families the long-